It's time to call our March work session to order. I had to think about what month it is. I apologize, but it is March and this is our work session. And it's time to go ahead and get started if everybody's ready. All right, so next Monday, we will have several proclamations. And I'll talk about a couple that I have on here. Alvin and I were approached by one of the Lanier Longhorn baseball parents. And he mentioned to us that he would love to do a City of Sugar Hill night. And so we agreed to do a proclamation. And they have invited all of us to come to their game on March the 15th, which is next Friday. They'll be playing Jackson County. And we'll have the opportunity to read the proclamation on the field. And they have even offered to let us throw out some pitches if we would like some first pitches. And so I have not done that in a long time, so I'm going to need to practice a little bit before the game. But Alvin and I obviously do a lot at Lanier High School and are kind of getting more and more connected there. And so they reached out and just want to show a partnership between the city and the baseball program. And so I have a copy of that in the e-packet. And I may make some edits. Doesn't feel quite personal enough for me. I just kind of took some data off of their website, so I may change it around a little bit. And then next on the agenda is a proclamation recognizing Cholorectal Cancer Awareness Month. We have a new business that we'll be doing a ribbon cutting for in March. It's GI North. And this is a service that they provide. They are affiliated with Northside Hospital. And they are actually, at some point in time, will be tied to the new Northside Hospital facility that will be located here in Sugar Hill at some point in the future. And so next Monday, some of their leadership team will be here just for the proclamation. And again, I have a copy of that in there, this language that they provided to me. And I probably won't go beyond what they have already given me. And then I'll hand it over to Councilmember Anderson to talk about recognition of Mark Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, it's really what it says on there, just recognizing Mark for his 20 years of service to the city and to the community and for the various organizations that he's participated in and still participates in. Just an opportunity for him and his family to come and receive a recognition for his time and service on city council and various boards.
Sounds good.
I have a question there.
Yes, sir.
So I didn't see anything in the packet about, you know, wording or whatever. But the real question would be, obviously, Mark was on there, but Jennifer and Mason were as well. Typically, at least historically, they were always presented a plaque and that sort of thing, or anything going to be done there. Or maybe it's already been done, it just wasn't at the meeting or something. But I think we should probably consider that as well.
Yeah, I've worked with Mark to make sure this date worked for him. But I'll check with Mason and Jen on dates that worked for them and their family. So no, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perkel. Good suggestion. All right, any other questions or comments about any of those three? All right, good deal. Next, we'll move on to old business. And we have this zoning ordinance amendment. And I don't see Kipo here today. Claire, you're going to handle it.
Yes.
Fantastic.
Yes, I'm filling in.
All right, please, please begin.
Let me see if I can connect. But we can go ahead and get moving. So at the January council meeting, council asked staff to provide recommendations for amendments to the zoning ordinance for building height and density bonuses for the Central Business District, RS 72 and R 36. Staff presented these recommendations to the Planning Commission. At the February meeting, Planning Commission recommended approval with a vote of four to zero. And the specific amendments are outlined in the epacts, as well as summarized on the first page of the epact and on the screen.
All right, is that it? All right, I know that Gary and Taylor were working on this. Any questions or comments?
Just one thing for clarification. On the agenda, it just says building height in R 36 and CBD. In the actual description she put up there, it does talk about the density, which is in the R 36. Probably would like to see that added to the agenda wording as well, just so everybody's clear on what we're voting on, since it's more than just height. It's height and density, at least in R 36.
Got it. I think that's fine. I noticed that it doesn't say public hearing, but I'm assuming that we are going to have a public hearing.
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay. All right, any other questions or comments? So it sounds like we have consensus on this moving forward? Good, very good. All right, next, we'll move on to Sugar Hill boards. Sorry, we're moving on to new business. And change in zoning conditions at 5952 Coming Highway. Logan, welcome.
Good evening. All right, so can you all hear me all right? All right, so this is a change in conditions at 5952 Coming Highway. It's a currently undeveloped property next to the Zaxby's across from the Kroger down Closer image. This is the overall proposed site development. They're proposing a quick serve restaurant, as well as a bank facility. This change in conditions applies to just the bank facility. And specifically, they're wanting to modify Condition 6S from Annexation 2007-10 to allow for intercoms associated with the bank facility. And that's all.
Y'all are fast on these. Before I ask if there's any questions, I have a question for you. Is the reason why we're only doing the bank is because a restaurant's already allowed?
So for the restaurant, they are not proposing to have an intercom system with that restaurant, so they just wanted to be very clear for just the bank.
Got it. All right, any other questions?
And just to comment on there, so back when the Zaxby's came in and even when Kroger and the grocery store was coming in, Twin Creeks had some concerns about what was going on. Particularly, they were concerned about the speakers, and that's why there was a prevention on that. But for a bank, ear hours are going to be probably like nine or 10 to five, maybe not open past noon on Saturday, not open past noon on Sunday, so it's likely not a concern. It was there in the original, where they were talking about restaurants, you know, with the drive-through until 10 or whatever.
Good point on that. One more question, if you don't mind. I do remember also with Zaxby's, there was a concern about the buffer between the back of Zaxby's and the homes. It looks to me like there's a much bigger buffer in this situation. Is that the case?
They are, they are working with the buffer that was previously approved with that annexation. I think it's around 40 feet. It's a variable buffer, but they are working within that confine.
Okay. Sorry for my questions. Yes, Taylor?
And just to piggyback on Gary and Brandon's point about that as well, in the case of Zaxby's, the speaker's actually in the back of the building, whereas in this case, it's a video board that's on the side of the building next to, well, there's a vacant lot between it and Jake Johnson, but pushing it even further up, further away from the residential property as well. So just to point that out.
Thank you, Taylor. Anybody else? All right, I guess we'll move on to item number four, Ms. Whittington.
Three.
Three. I'm sorry, guys, I'm all over the place tonight. I did not mean to leave out Meg. Yes, ma'am, you're up next, please.
I have an item on the agenda about Sugar Hill boards for their requirements and terms. And I felt like this was a perfect time to introduce this, being that we have two vacancies on the Planning Commission and three new council members. So it's a good time to review where we are and where we should be. Mainly, or part of it, is concerning the city website. And I would like to see the information for the city boards consistent, not only on the website, but so that we understand the consistency of the boards. For example, on the city website, it explains the boards a little bit, but it doesn't say what is required for a person to serve on that board. And I think that should be included on the website as well. Also, the terms, some of the boards list the members with the date their term ends and some do not. And I think it would be very clear and concise to list the expiration date for the boards. And then along with that, also there, along with the requirements, are attendance requirements. Currently, the Downtown Development Authority and also the Development Authority have attendance, an attendance policy that sets a precedent. And I think it might be a good idea to also have some type of attendance policy for the Planning Commission and any other board that the council feels would be relevant for an attendance policy, since we already have one, or actually, two of the boards. I think on the requirements, it should be listed that board members need to live within the city limits of Sugar Hill. I would guess that almost anybody who is interested in serving on a board already lives in the city, but it would be nice to have that clear on the city website. And if there are any other requirements that the council thinks are relevant, this would be the perfect time to discuss them. Do you want me to move on to the terms?
Let's talk about these first three that you brought up, and then we can move on to the next part. And so, and I think I'm breaking it up into three different things, just because I think there's a different person that has each role. But obviously, we don't do the website. It's staff-driven. And I personally don't see any problem with putting more information out there and making them more consistent. I think we just need to, and maybe you're the best person to do this, just need to work with Paul and our communications team that does the website to figure out the uniformity that you would like to have. And I think we all, I think I'm not speaking for everybody, but I think we all agree with you. It'd be great to have some consistency on each of those.
Right. I did mention this to Paul a couple of weeks ago, and I just thought it might be also a good idea to bring it up for the council as well.
And then the other thing that you were asking about was the attendance policy. And we did, I think we updated the Downtown Development Authority bylaws, at least within the last couple of years. And one of the changes that we did make was we did put in an attendance policy, because we had one member that literally, for the four years of their appointment, didn't, maybe came once or twice. And so, you know, we were, because of the way the state law is written, we were not able to remove that individual, and we didn't have that policy in place on the bylaws. And so we did that. And I think that probably prompted the language for the Development Authority. And to be honest with you, it probably would be great to have an attendance policy. Again, not speaking for everybody, just speaking from my own vantage point and based on the challenges that we have experienced in the past. I think, though, that city council, if I recall correctly, we update the bylaws, we approve and update the bylaws for the boards and commissions. And so we would need to, we would need to, at some point in time, maybe in April, have those bylaws on the agenda where we could update the attendance policy. And we'd need to look at all of the boards and commissions that we have to see if they have that. Would that be okay with everybody? And it'd give, Mr. Hartley's not here today, obviously, but it would give him the opportunity to maybe work, to work on it a little bit. And then, yes, absolutely.
Just making a comment regarding that, if we are the acting body on those attendance policies, it would probably be a good idea if we got input from those boards, so we don't institute an attendance policy that's either too onerous or where, they just need to have input in to make sure that we don't do something to them that causes a problem for them. So some, I know that for us, on the Riverlands Authority, when we adopted ours, it was three consecutive missed meetings. It would give us the opportunity to remove that. It's not automatically gone, it just wouldn't remove that individual. But we've had one person who has dealt on the Riverlands Authority, unfortunately, has dealt with some health issues and then had two family members pass away. So they've had a lot of issues in the last couple of months. You expect him back probably this month. But I think that flexibility and input from the boards before we change their bylaws unilaterally would be a good idea.
And Taylor, remind me, the Development Authority, does city council make a decision on attendance?
No, that's decided by the, because they're an authority and created under state law, their bylaws, and Lee, please correct me if I'm wrong, but their bylaws, because they're authority, the directors can remove a director if they're in violation of the bylaws, correct?
Well, maybe. So a good lawyer answer, maybe. Your Development Authority and your Downtown Development Authority are a little bit different than all your other boards and commissions, because their requirements for, both requirements for the qualifications to be on that and the terms are set by state law. And there is a Supreme Court case out there that because those terms are set by state law, that you can't remove someone for no cause. That left open whether you could remove someone for cause. And I think, as the mayor talked about, you had a member who, for many years, did not attend any meetings. And so I think the way that was worded is if a person doesn't attend so many times within a year, that the DDA can recommend to the council that that person be removed. And trying to say, you know, that would be for cause, that, and on your other boards and commissions, I think most of those, the wording is they serve at your pleasure anyway. So I think if you want to set attendance requirements, either that board could recommend to y'all that somebody be removed, or this council could simply remove them based on that, based on your own criteria.
Thank you.
It was my understanding that only, as Lee mentioned, the authorities have bylaws. But I didn't think the Planning Commission had a set of bylaws, because they're not restricted like the state, like the authorities are, because of the state.
I don't know, yeah.
And I'm not sure about that. I have to look, too. I don't think they do unless, and if they do, I think this group certainly has the authority to dictate what those would say or not say.
And we do have bylaws for, I'm aware of, the Arts Commission and the Historic Preservation And, you know, they probably don't have an attendance policy currently. And then we also, I think I would suggest we give some flexibility to Taylor's point, because I know that, in particular, one of the Planning and Zoning Commission members has had cancer, and that's one reason why that individual has been out for a lot. But all great suggestions, Meg.
Thank you, because I did check the city charter, too. And there are, there's information on the city charter about the Planning Commission, about their composition, appointment, and tenure, not attendance.
And then one of the other things you brought up is the Sugar Hill residency requirement. And there is a provision in state law for the Downtown Development Authority to have a certain number of non-residents. And the purpose of that is so that downtown business owners that may not live in the city can have a role on the DDA. And there's another exception that I'll talk about after Lee gives his opinion.
That's correct, Mayor. There are specific qualifications on the Downtown Development Authority, particularly in, maybe the Development Authority as well as to, and they do not all require that they be residents, but they do have to meet criteria of having an interest in the downtown, be a business owner, or have some particular interest in that downtown area. And actually, the state law was changed a couple of years ago. You can actually have at least one member that's not even a resident of the county. All the others have to be at least residents of the county. And I think it's at least four have to be residents of the city.
I'm only aware of the Historic Preservation Society, because that's what I've been mostly involved with since I came on city council. But they originally started out having a Sugar Hill residency requirement. However, they, over time, they asked us to change that, because some individuals in other parts of the county that had a particular expertise in archiving, et cetera, wanted to be involved. And so they wanted to have a little bit of flexibility. And, but that is the only bylaws that I'm aware of. There may be residency requirements or flexibility in other bylaws, I'm not sure.
And that makes sense, too. And I think that's great discussion, that we do have consistency, that everybody who's interested in serving on a board is aware of the requirements of where you can or cannot live.
And for these, if you don't mind, I might suggest that you work through Paul and Frank to maybe come up with a plan for us in April to maybe update some of the boards and commission bylaws, if that, okay? And please continue with the rest.
The other thing I wanted to discuss was the terms. And again, this is about the city website. But on the website, when you go to government and then click under boards, there are several boards listed on there. Terms are listed for the Arts Commission, the Youth Council, and the Development Authority. For the other boards, there's the names of the people who serve there, but doesn't say when their term expires. So the other boards, they've got the Planning Commission, the Downtown Development Authority, and the Sugar Hill Preservation Society. The Players Guild is listed as a board. But on our city, on that link on our website, there's no information of who serves on the board, there's no phone number of who to contact or an email. But I did find on their website, on the eagle@sugarhill.com/playersguild, they do have an email address, and there are board members listed there. So we need to decide, is the Players Guild a board, or are they a group of volunteers? Because there's another link on the website called Get Involved. So I was not too sure if the Players Guild should be listed.
I don't think we, I don't think, I don't think we appoint the board of the Players Guild, so it may just be listed out on the website and maybe confusing. Maybe we just need to remove that.
Yeah, and I just looked at the Players Guild, Meg, and the board members are listed. I don't know if that was a new addition. They're just, they don't look the same as the other ones now.
Okay. They weren't there Friday, okay. Okay. Well, that's your shot.
When Avery mentioned this to me several weeks ago, we have been, we have been working on the issue. And I think the issue, her point is legitimate, providing as much information as we can about all these various entities that we have. It's, the government's very complex. All these boards and authorities are designed to help this city council do its job, because they can't be at everything. And, but having consistency in terms of terms and purpose, authorizing legislation, so we're working on making that as easy as we can. If you want to know, for example, the Downtown Development Authority will have a link that takes you to the law that helps create it. And same way with the Development Authority. But we do need to list, like, the Players Guild, as well as the Broad Street Concert Band, as separate entities, because they have their own boards. We do have, we do have an arrangement, an agreement with them in terms of, because they're utilizing the space that's owned by the city for various activities. And there's an expectation, they give us something back. Those are, those are basically baked into the agreement we have with them. But we do need to, we still want to show them what they're doing, but we just need to have a different heading, so that we don't cause any confusion. But we have been working on that. I think by April, we'll be able to have something. And maybe by the, hopefully by the end of March, we can sit down with you prior to the meeting and show you, we can go through all of those. And hopefully, it meets your expectations, because at least looking at our website, because we're going through the whole process of updating now, the Eagle website, Bull website, as well as the downtown website, and then we got the city website, so. Yeah, Victoria and Ned were, they're systematically kind of going through and updating all the backend pages. And so I was in her office the other day, and they were working on one of the groups, so.
Since we do have two vacancies on the Planning Commission, I needed to look up some information, because in January, I was informed that all of the members of the Planning Commission's terms had expired. And then the chart we received in February gave the post number, the name of the person serving, and an expiration date in the future. And I thought, all right, how did this change in just three weeks, that they're all expired and now they're not? So I went through the minutes to look. And for example, Post 1, who is currently still serving, was first appointed at the January 11, 2016 council meeting. There, the terms for the Planning Commission are three years. So that would have been for a term beginning January 2016 and ending 12/31/18. And then Post 1 was reappointed at the 2019 council meeting in January. So that three-year term would end 12/31/21, and a new term would have begun January 2022 and would end at the end of this year. However, there was no reappointment, actually, for any of the Planning Commission's members in 2022 or 2023. Now, it just so happens that Posts 3 and 4 are the posts that are, well, one is definitely vacant, the other person has expressed an interest in having a replacement made. And both of those posts do expire 12/31/23. So they would be starting a new three-year term, starting this year. But I think it's important that we understand that the, it's the post that has the term. The members are now, since they have not been officially reappointed or resworn in, are now, according to the charter, serving at the pleasure of the council on a month-to-month basis. So that makes me believe that perhaps either in December or January, when a new term starts, well, at least in December, if the term is expiring, that member should be contacted. Do you want to continue? Or, and new appointments should be official in January, instead of just carrying on, because as I say, there's been no reappointments in 2022 or 23. So I think that's something we need to discuss, is, and it would also be very helpful, when we make a motion, I appoint so-and-so for Post 3 on the Planning Commission for a term that begins X date and ends in three years on 12/31 the year.
And I don't disagree with you on the motions at all. And in fact, on our agendas, when we do appointments to our boards or commissions, it should be stated on our agenda, the post, who we're appointing to and what post. And we didn't, we didn't have that on last month like that at all, so we technically didn't do it the right way. But I'll just talk, I don't know, I don't keep track of when appointments begin and end. That's the responsibility of the city staff. And so they're going to be able to better tell us when those Planning and Zoning Commission terms end. And I think it's just a matter of Jane and Frank and kind of getting together and thinking through when the most recent appointments were made. However, having said that, members do serve at the pleasure of the council. And so for as long as I can remember, even before me, if someone serves and they serve well, then we just allow them to continue serving. And I think my recollection has been probably in the last eight, 10, eight to 10 years, that basically what we fill are vacancies, so when people are ready to move on, or if there's, if there's someone that's not doing a good job, maybe we encourage them to move on and we fill that. And so, so that's kind of why you have, you know, you might have some people that have not been reappointed, even though their terms have expired. And that's just kind of a practice that's happened in the past, so. But I don't, I don't know. I mean, I've noticed, too, on this list, that you have two that expired in 2024, and there are three that are listed that expire at the end of 2026. I don't know who provided that to you, but I think it needs a little bit more research.
Right.
Yep.
That's why I looked at all the, that's why I looked at all the minutes to see when each post was first appointed.
Yeah, I think, I wouldn't take that burden on yourself. Yeah, I, I think, I wouldn't take that burden on yourself. I'd let the city team do that for you. That's a lot of work for you to have to do, to try to find all of that information. And they probably have it in a folder or something that they can easily, that they can easily pull up.
I just felt like I needed to look it up. Because when I heard, when I was told that all the Planning Commission members' terms had expired, and then I saw a chart with dates in the future, that seemed a little confusing. And, for example, with post four, that person resigned his post effective 12/31/23. And nothing was said at the January meeting. So that's what led me to look up all of this, because the two, there was confliction between a verbal conversation and a chart that said their terms expired in the future.
You got it. I would check in with Kyfo and Jane, and, and ask them to, to help you with that information.
Mayor, I have a comment. I know practice in the past has been just, you know, they continue to serve without reappointment. I would suggest that we either have a policy, refine the policy. I don't know if our city attorney can help us, that we already have a policy in place of, are we formally reappointing these people? Or what is written down that we follow? Because it looks like we did actually do a reappointment for one of these posts of, you know, officially, but not, you know, so just, just consistency across the board, whatever we have, just, just so we're all, you know, that happened in the future, essentially.
Yeah, I think our consistency is state law, because that actually allows for members to continue serving. So it's actually, that's, that's been.
But I think as a, as a body here, we should have a policy that we continue to follow. So going forward, we are all on the same page. It's not, you know, when, when our posts turn over, if they turn over, then the next person knows exactly what the expectation is going forward. That's all.
Sure. Got it. All right. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
That's it?
Yes. I just wanted to make sure we had an open discussion on what are we going to do about terms, and requirements, and responsibilities.
Okay. Yes, Taylor.
I took those, those term expirations as being, if those folks who are, whoever's appointed to it, that's the expiration date of that post's term in the future, not, not necessarily that they had been reappointed. It wasn't clear in there, but that's what I took that to mean, was that the term expiration, whoever's appointed to post one is going to expire 12/31/24, and so on down that list. And we know that Jeremy White's post four is vacant, and Julie Adams' post three is vacant. So as you pointed out, whoever gets appointed to those would serve through 12/31/2026, whenever they are, whoever's appointed, whenever they're appointed, they would expire on that date. So, but I agree, I agree too, that it'd probably be good to go ahead and reappoint. If, if it's the council's pleasure, Rosemary, Jason, and Phil, who've expressed a desire to stay on, just go ahead and formally reappoint them to those posts, so that it's clear that when their post's term expires for them. And then, between us, decide who will fill the vacancies in post three and post four. So I just wanted to clarify that. I think that's all that was meant to, to mean for the term expiration.
Got it. Sounds good. So it seems like, like at this point, we don't really have any action items for the city council meeting, but we probably will in April. So, okay. Sounds good. Thank you, Meg.
I would just clarify on that. I think we, we do have the two open posts to fill. But we don't have, in terms of the expirations, and other, for the other three, or, or any of the boards, those policies, that, that needs to cook. But we do have the two open spots on the board.
I'd actually like a little bit of clarification on Julie Adams, because if it is 2026, and again, I don't know when her term expires, she would actually need to resign.
No, her term actually ended, Julie, ended 12/31/23.
I'm just saying on here, it says 26. And I, I just would like a little bit more guidance from our legal counsel on when these terms actually end, and what's going on. That's just my opinion.
Clarification. Did they not serve at our pleasure, and they were not reappointed? I'm just, I think that goes back to my question of, we need to have a well-defined policy that we, as a council, agree on, of what that looks like. I think there is just confusion all around.
You got it. I completely understand. And I'm confused as well, so.
And, and Julie was appointed in January 2021, according to the city council agenda minutes. Julie Adams was reappointed in January 2021. And so that term ended 12/31/23, because they are three-year terms. So being that, nobody has been reappointed, that's why the post, the, the chart that Kyfo gave us, the post expires in 26. The person who's serving that post right now is serving on a month-to-month basis, because they have not been formally reappointed.
Sounds good to me. Lee, do you think we need a little more guidance on this, or?
Well, I think that what Ms. Avery just said is probably correct, that if these people were appointed, they had a term that expired, if they were not reappointed at the end of that term, then they are, the way your charter and your ordinances read is, they continue to serve until their successor is qualified.
And I'm not disagreeing with you, but you used the word probably. And I'm not sure if that's a legal term or not. You said they were probably not reappointed. I'm, all I'm asking for is that we check the legal counsel, and we make certain that they were not reappointed. That's just my.
Now, I will agree with you, Mayor. I don't think I said probably not reappointed. I said what Ms. Avery said was probably correct. And I said that you need to check and see if they've been appointed or not appointed. But if somebody's term has expired, and they have not been appointed, they are serving until their successor is qualified and appointed.
You got it.
Now, I would suggest, when you reappoint people, that you stay with the terms that you have, and do it by post, so that you don't have everybody expir, that's designed, so you don't have everybody expiring in the same year, and a whole new group coming on.
Right.
So they're, they're staggered. And probably with this city, I know with certainly with other cities we represented, we have from time to time, just said, okay, let's just, when we're reappointing people, let's just go through and clarify who everybody's term is, and who's at that, so that it's clear going forward. Because that just happens from time to time. People don't get reappointed, you get out of sync with some things. And that's the easiest way to do it, would be to go through and say, okay, these people are appointed for this term at this post. And, and then, then have that clarified in your, your minutes, when you're appointing people, as to what the post is, and when it expires. And then you've got that going forward. And the way you should do that is, obviously, every time you reappoint somebody, you should appoint them to the post, and say, for this term, so.
Got it. Yes.
Just so we have an action item to come out of this, I would suggest that in our April meeting, we reappoint all five posts on the Planning Commission, and set their terms per what's shown here. And we reappoint those that have expressed a desire to serve, and then we fill the vacancies of posts three and four. That would be, I guess, in our April meeting. Is that, is that reasonable with everybody, that we would just reappoint the?
I would just ask if there's any meeting or action plan for the March meeting? Do they have anything on their agenda that they need to meet for? Because otherwise, one absentee, and they don't have a quorum.
Yeah, we will have items on, on the March agenda.
So would that be a March, and we want to add that to next week's agenda? Is that what, is that?
I, I would think add the two that we know, the one that's resigned, the other one that has expressed interest, to, to be relieved. And then sort out the term, and we think we know those terms. If not, I think it certainly is not unreasonable to figure those out within a week, have the staff do that. And then we can deal with the other three in the policy going forward. That would be my suggestion, whatever the majority is on that.
Yeah, I'll make a decision on it. I think we need to give staff some guidance. So what's the consensus?
I think we need to reappoint the, at least the two vacancies in March, and then reappoint everyone, the other three in April.
All right. On the agenda, though, it needs to be two separate items. And it specifies the post that they're being appointed to. That's the right way to do it, and the most transparent way to do it. And then we'll do, we'll deal with the, the bylaws and everything else in April.
And one more thing, just to clarify, Julie's post is not vacant at this time. She is, she has agreed to serve until her appointment is named, just, just to clarify that, in terms of the March meeting.
Got it. All right, everybody good? All right. Next, we'll move on to item number four. And that is you.
Thank you, Mayor. At the February 12 city council meeting, there was an agenda item to appoint a Planning Commission member. A motion was made to nominate Mr. Shebs, and the vote was three to two, an approval. Mayor Hembry exercised the power of veto for the item. According to the Sugar Hill Code, to section 233, it allows a veto by the mayor of administrative resolutions, as long as it's within the same meeting, made immediately following the adoption of the item. It refers to the charter to section 227A3, to how it is presented at the meeting. At the following meeting, it is presented as a veto for a council vote at the next meeting of the city council, or the following meeting, either one. And it requires a affirmative vote of four members of the city council to override the veto. So at next week's, next week's council meeting, the veto can be presented, or it can be presented in April.
So does that have to be presented?
I think Gary's asking that.
Yeah, the, the legal question I had is, my understanding of the charter is that if it's an ordinance that's vetoed, it can be overwritten at the next meeting, or the next meeting. This wasn't an ordinance, and so it would be considered a resolution. And I thought those had to be overwritten at the same meeting, or not at all. So I don't have any need to carry that for, we're discussing the item, we're going to have an item on the agenda for it as well. So that was my thought. But, and that's what I was asking clarification on, but I'm not sure he had an immediate knowledge of that.
If we can just remove it from the agenda, is that possible?
I think if the council wants to remove it from the agenda, but the, to respond to Mr. Purple's question, the, a resolution has to be vetoed at the meeting, an ordinance has to be vetoed within 10 days of presentation to the mayor. But the charter provision says that, that they are overwritten in the same manner. So they would be put on the next council meeting to be overwritten, if the council desires. I think if there's a consensus from the council tonight, that they don't desire to move forward with that, I think you could, through a consensus of the council, remove it, if that's what you want to do.
Is there consensus? And I think you all recall why I did it. I just wanted everybody to have the nominee share, have, have the ability to see who the nominee was going to be. And so, it's no, no ill intent, it was just, it was just more trying to do some team building. But, but is there consensus to remove it, since we're going to take care of it in a, in a? Thank you, Gary. Yes, sir. So I think it'll be removed. All right. Next, we're going to move on to city manager discussions and updates.
I'll call on Troy in a minute, to give us some, some updates and things I think can be very, very, you'd be very, very interested in. But I do want you to know that we did receive approval from the state auditor for our FY 2022 audit. I'm really pleased with that. And then, on 24th of March, we'll be making our announcement of our Bowl and Eagle Concert Series during our 20, or 85th, wow, 85th anniversary. And, but we'll make, we'll have one of the announcements happening next Friday, since the bigger group is going public with their tour schedule. So, but the rest of it will be announced on March 24, as part of the birthday celebration. And I want you to know that we continue to, to look at our websites, to make sure that those websites are as informative as they can be. And I do, I do sincerely appreciate you looking at, at the website and all the data that's in there. And, and we will make sure that, that it is as interactive as it can be. We've got some great talent that are working on it, with Ned and, and Victoria back there. So I appreciate their help. So with that, I'll turn it over to Troy, to give us an update. I think you're going to start off with solid waste.
Yeah, I did, I wanted to provide a brief update from last meeting, related to solid waste and recycling. And what I wanted to start with was just letting you know that I did get a chance to reach out to our waste management contact, and passed along to them the request for some contract changes. So they have taken that back to their corporate staff, and are working on a response for it. So I hope to have that at next month's meeting. In the meantime, I wanted to present this, don't think there was, I guess, the right time last month. But I, I do track the metrics from waste management that I want to share with you tonight. When we transitioned away from the bag service, I think in November of '22, we started tracking complaints, issues with missed pickups. And that's largely what we were focused on, also the cart swaps. So we are getting weekly emails about that. And so this just represents the results of those emails, as I've entered them. And you'll see that back in early '23, there were pretty considerable numbers of missed pickups. And that had to do with people starting accounts that were just on bag service, and started that kind of thing. But as we moved through early 2023, it stabilized at, at some level less than 50. And what I took from that is just a calculation of what their success rate is. So we, they are currently at about 7,000 residential accounts. So these 50 addresses or less that might have a missed pickup, is the calculation of the success. Success rate doesn't mean that they do perfectly when they pick up trash, but they did pick up the trash. So might have a leak here and there, might not put the cart back exactly where the customer wants it. But for the most part, the trash got picked up. So why do I have two charts there? The first one is zoomed in on the last 5%. The actual success rate chart, had it zoomed out appropriately, the bottom there. So they're very close to well above 99. So they're doing, doing well on the actual pickup of the trash. May not like volume issue, may not like the price, but they're, but they're getting. One other item that I think council member Avery pointed out was the rates from some of our neighbors. This is a chart that we developed back in 2023. So this is about right, and I did update the Sugar Hill rate to 1960. And there are two communities that charge less than we do, for the same type of service. And they also researched a little bit more, found out a bit more about their customer class ratio. So they've got a larger commercial industrial component than we do. And shift some of the cost for providing solid waste collection services, commercial industrial account classes. So I just wanted to mention that, and I'll have a more comprehensive update.
Any questions, Troy?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
When you were looking at the rates of these cities, do you know which ones receive weekly recycling? From my research, I know that Peachtree Corners and Lilburn does have weekly.
Yeah, I did not note that. These are, I tried to normalize the, the rate, so this doesn't distinguish.
I have a question as well. I don't see our two closest neighbors, Swanee and Buford, on there.
Well, Buford, as you know, collects it themselves, and. Well, Beaufort, as you know, collects it themselves, and Swanee is an open market.
So they have no set rate in that market? It's whatever the hauler?
If you can get a better rate, go get it.
Good.
Just out of curiosity, what feedback have you gotten from Swanee on that? That sounds like a difficult situation for the resident.
Yeah, I don't know. I haven't talked to their public works or staff, but I imagine it provides a lot of wear and tear on the roads.
Yes, Taylor.
I have friends on City Council in Swanee and also obviously many friends that live in Swanee. And so I asked them about this. And in general, what they've told me is their rates vary from about $25 to $50 a month. If you actually go to Republic, if you go to the city's website and you there, the only hauler they list on their website for you to contract directly with is Republic, and it's $50 a month for the same level of service that we get, which is weekly trash every other week, recycling. And I'm also told that some of the HOAs in the city of Swanee contract directly with a single hauler so that they only they don't have trash bins on their streets throughout the week and have garbage trucks running through their subdivision throughout the week. But they don't they're also, I mean, you're talking about 100 to 200, maybe 300 customers versus the 7,000 customers that we've got. So they don't get they don't get near the the price negotiating power that we have. So but and Swanee has been hesitant. They've looked into it in talking with some of their city council members. They've looked into it, but they've really just decided to stay away from it for now, just because of the of the politics of it. At this point, they're just they're just kind of letting it be a Wild West in Swanee. But they don't like it. The the city council does not like the situation that they're in there either. So it's a it's an interesting conversation to have with if you have friends or talk with some of the city council members in Swanee about it.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, next.
I have, out of order, so I'd like to, with your permission, jump into a few construction updates and then come back to the pavement management policy.
You're open. We're being way too formal tonight anyways, so just go go for it.
I did want to mention, we are working on a project related to our downtown streetscape improvements. And I mentioned this in the last opportunity we had to talk about this subject, that we're working on a public information open house for this particular project on the 19th of March, and that'll be from 5:30 to 7:30. And what this meeting's intentions are is to present the scope of work and the project limits in the West Broad Street corridor from Highway 20 to Alton Tucker, and focus on some improvements that we've identified might be appropriate for this particular section of the downtown. And this graphic just represents what we will be sharing and posting online. This is what streetscape elements consist of with regard to trademarked but decorative signposts, decorative light poles, things that we've included in the past that we want to add to, in addition to our wayfinding and identification signs to downtown, enhancing street crosswalks, pedestrian safety, focus of largely what we're approaching with this. Also, we'll be looking at landscape enhancements for certain parts of the corridor, in addition to replacing some of the tree grates with larger tree wells that will keep vegetation from popping out the sidewalk and creating ripping hazards. We have, as a part of the Alton Tucker project that is underway currently, some head crossing enhancements as well, front of the gym, lighted by pedestrians across West Broad. We're also looking at enhancing the lighting in downtown. So that would consist not only the decorative light posts, but roadway lighting, also the decorative lighting at the bottom of the, kind of hard to tell, but decorative lights is part of that. We're also looking at some other traffic calming measures, like the stamped asphalt that was in the original contract, and also some other ways to let the drivers know tactically a tactile fashion that they've entered a downtown pedestrian-oriented space. So those could be anything from a deeper stamped cobblestone-type product or something like that. We're looking at those, and this is just a way for us to communicate what kind of tools we're looking at. Doesn't mean it's part of the scope. Doesn't mean it makes its way into the final version. This is a way for us to communicate to the public, working on. March 19, 5:30.
All right. Thank you, Troy. Any questions or comments on this item?
I've got a few there.
Yes, sir.
I'm certainly no fan of those painted crosswalks like that. I don't mind the updated street signage downtown, but I have a bit of a problem if we're spending a lot of money on fancy signs there, because there's a lot of signs on city streets that are not even readable. I think we need to make a concerted effort, certainly as we're looking into paving of streets, of updating our street signs throughout the city. A lot of them are in pretty bad shape. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Yes, sir. Taylor.
Troy, will this, in addition to the streetscape, will this also change the angle of the angled parking in downtown?
We are looking at parking as a part of the contract with Kekin Wood. And so we're looking at not only parking count, but safe access to and from the parking spaces. So yes.
Okay, good. Yeah, because I think if we make them a little sharper, it'll help with the folks pulling out. I know it doesn't really make a whole lot of difference of some of those, especially those humongous trucks that park in some of those parts spots, but it will help them so that folks don't have to get into both lanes if we turn that angle. If we make sharpen that angle up a little bit, it'll allow folks to get in and out of it. Plus, one thing I'm seeing folks do now, because of the angle of the parking, is turn left into the angled parking on the opposite side of the street, which is dangerous, but it's also, I mean, it's that's a tough move to turn into a basically, yeah, or they're backing in. Yeah. So I think that changing that angle slightly would be a big improvement for folks that are parking in those spots. They don't have to get out into both lanes when they pull out. But thank you. I appreciate that.
So one additional comment, or two, both about the roundabout. The first one I noticed as I drove through it today, that some of the stones on the side have fallen off or been knocked off, and they're laying there, three or four of them laying in the roundabout itself. But if we're looking at doing rework on the streetscape, I think the roundabout needs to be considered as well. I think it's too high. You can't see over it, and therefore it kind of defeats the purpose of it being a roundabout where you can see if anybody's coming, and you move on through. I almost have to come to a stop each time. I drive a four-wheel-drive truck. You can't see over the planter and then the plantings and the decoration in it. The purpose of the roundabout is you see if anybody's coming, you slow down or stop if there is, and if not, you keep going. But the tight radius of that roundabout, if you don't know they're coming and you're not stopping, they're around that corner on top of you when you're only halfway pulled out. I think we need to consider cutting the height of it down.
I'm going to say amen to Gary on that. Thank you. I feel the same way. I got a big truck as well. It's hard to get around that thing. Yes, ma'am.
We can't see you in a lower car. It's
Yes, sir. Yes, Meg.
Troy, on the public hearing, is this sponsored by the city manager's office or one of the authority boards or planning and zoning? Who's like in charge of the public hearing?
It's not a public hearing.
I mean, the community open house, the open house.
It's sponsored by me.
Okay, great. And I would also like to say that we need to get that on the March calendar, because it's not on the March calendar for the city of Sugar Hill.
That's on me also. I did not let our communication.
And we know Troy will. Absolutely. All right. Any other questions or comments? All right, what's next?
You approved a contract with Garrett Paving for roadway repairs and repaving. We are currently working on the contract with Garrett. We have reached out to them about adding streets to the list and extending the contract. They have no objections to that. There is also a supplemental budget that the governor is approving or has approved.
He's approved. He signed it Thursday.
Today, thank you. That will authorize additional L-Meg funds for 2024. So that'll extend through June. Once we get the dollar amount, we'll bring back a recommendation for additional work under that contract. I will say, as it relates to Mr. Perkel's comment earlier, we are going to be adding signing and striping to our L-Meg contracts annually. So for roads that we are repaving, resurfacing, repairing, we'll be switching out the signs in that neighborhood or on that street. And there are some federal highway administration requirements that have been long overdue. They keep getting delayed every five or 10 years. But and those have to do with reflectivity of the sign, and they look dated in age. So we'll replace as a part of that contract, not necessarily any others. But
All right. Any questions or comments?
Just one more thing there. You mentioned about those particular roads, but we had asked, and maybe you're getting to this, about adding additional roads to it to get caught up on our streets. Are you planning to discuss that?
Yes, I'll talk about the pavement management policy after.
Okay.
Thank you, Troy. Anybody else before we move on?
The Alton Tucker Boulevard realignment project, we were able to get the additional raised crosswalk installed, the work completed at the Level Creek and West Broad Street intersection. The brick pavers were delivered last week. They should be going in this week in in between storm events. And we are working on additional landscaping for that particular project on, sorry, the corners that are at the big intersection and then at in front of Old City Hall, sweet spot. The signal poles span wire were installed last week, and the signal equipment installation is continuing for the next three or four weeks. One of the projects that we are currently working on, unfortunately, in the background, the stream bank restoration project at Gary Perkel Park. And in some of the recent storm events, the stream bank has eroded to the point where it's jeopardizing the sidewalk. On the Austin Garner entrance side, close the sidewalk, and we're monitoring it currently. But that whole corner there, this area that looks like a banana here, is the side that is continuing to get get eaten away by the erosive flows of the stream in that area. The project, unfortunately, and counterintuitively, requires the Corps to approve us fixing the stream bank and EPD to give us a buffer variance. So unfortunately, it's having to go through that process before we can get started. Thoughts, questions on that in the floodway? I think we've had maybe two or three flood events since I've been here in the last 10 years in that area. But the site is where the red box is there.
I mean, it needs to be done, so.
Yeah. This is also, I guess, one of the other reasons we keep monitoring it and just are very cautious. It's downstream of one of the saddle dykes at Lake Lanier. So we are kind of mindful of potential dam breach in that area. Another project we have worked on in January was the sidewalk on First Avenue. We are adding street lighting to First Avenue as well. Have a proposal from Georgia Power to install street lighting on that segment. We're still working on finalizing that before we have them order the materials.
Troy, if I if I could just make a comment, because I think the street lighting is actually really very important there in regards to the railroad tracks as well. But a lot of teenagers come from ballgames, Lanier High School, come through there. And I just think the more we can light up that area, the better and safer it is for our kids. And there've been some there've been some accidents. So I think that's a that's a great investment to make, so.
Troy, this while we're on street lighting, the intersection of 20 and Sycamore Road, I mean, it appears to be just somewhat dimmer as I'm going through, especially at night, coming across, you know, when we have folks asking to cross in the street there. So that's the area that when I'm going through at night, that I especially when I see people crossing across and those is turning to go right on Sycamore, it's it's pretty lowly dim, you know, so just more of a consideration, just kind of see if there's some opportunity there.
I can certainly reach out to Georgia Power, and I know Mr. Perkel asked about a couple other locations on 20, so we're working on those as well.
Got it.
Troy, I have a question for you about First Avenue. Is are we going to try to match the color of the light, like we talked about earlier today of?
Okay, all right.
The color temperature is very important to me.
Okay.
And we'll do our best to, all of the color temperature on
Must be like some inside information, because I have no clue what that means.
As you drive through the city, we've got about 15 to 20 different hues of burnt orange. It's a lovely color for the Longhorns, but I'd like a cohesive color if we could.
Totally get it.
Every time I talk to Georgia Power, there's some reason they can't get 3,000 Kelvin fixtures for whatever reason, 4,000. So we will work on that.
All right, next. Troy's got a lot of items tonight. You're done? Okay.
One one more item, and I'll just be brief with this one. I just wanted to update what we have discussed the last month or two, which is developing a policy and a strategy for pavement management. And I want to update you on where we're at with that. And I'm going to start with the technology part of it, which is we have ordered the software for us to complete the pavement condition assessment in-house. And it is vehicle-mounted. It will enable us to complete a condition assessment as often as we choose to. Realistically, I think once a year is is a reasonable timeframe to do it. We'll know after the conclusion of the L-Meg contract or resurfacing and repair contract how we did, and maybe what's coming up next. And that's a good strategy for us to tackle. The policy, I think, as I envision us writing it, would have some recommendations from this body about how often we do that. My recommendation is, makes sense to me, but we can get to that in a moment. I want to talk a little bit about what what I see us wanting to accomplish, and correct me here, as I say that the idea is that we develop a policy document that guides the pavement management process and establishes standards for its implementation. This policy framework would consist of some kind of inventory, which we've already got, we maintain, and we update on a regular basis as roads are added to the inventory. We report it annually to, got the data, got a very stable GIS system that we can add data to as we see fit. The condition assessment, as I mentioned, is our way of quantitatively establishing what each road segment's condition is. So not a necessarily a visual qualitative approach to it, but it is quantitative. So we've got standards, we've got numbers that we can assign to that particular segment. It's based on the PCI rating, which is a pavement condition index. Some of the metrics that we want to track as a part of our management program would be the frequency which with which we complete these pavement condition assessments. Rather than every four years or a very longer, much longer period of time, we do these annually, and that we develop a quantitative assessment by road classification. One of the things that we haven't talked a whole lot about is how much traffic a road gets in particular. And I will point out that entrance to each of your neighborhood gets in particular, and I will point out that entrance to each of your neighborhoods, for example, is gonna see a lot more traffic than a cul-de-sac in the back of your neighborhood. So it's something to keep in mind as we talk about prioritizing streets. I might recommend one street over another, or we might recommend or agree that one street serves more consideration in a neighborhood than some other location in the neighborhood. I just say that for reference, not in any particular location. Once we get to that stage, we need to establish what the benchmark is, so what is the condition that we want to maintain for a road, and what, what is that actionable level? And then from a methodology standpoint, I'm recommending that it be data-driven, that it be multi-pronged, not just simply throwing more asphalt on top of cracked asphalt, and then managing this from a lifecycle standpoint. My apologies about my spelling, but then develop a policy based on all of that, and I'll move off of that so you can't see the misspelling. The problem as, as we're approaching it is that we have limited resources, we have limited time, there is increasing demand in the construction industry, and that drives up prices and makes materials services. We also have increasing wear and tear on the roads because of what we've seen after the pandemic is, we'll drive their kids to school, looked at the Harpool Lane at anywhere, much longer than it was pre-pandemic. So all those trips cause wear and tear on the streets. We've approached this with a best management practice approach, and that's largely because we don't maintain real-time data on pothole locations or cracks, or to some extent, we need to do a better job of, of regulating utilities in our community. And I can't tell you how many times I drive along and see Georgia Power or Water Resources cutting a road without a permit, and I've gotta stop and make some phone calls when that happens. So we've just gotta maintain better controls over that practice. And then also, lastly, one of the things that we've tried to tackle is, is the idea of putting the worst streets first in the list and having one solution in mind for it, which is patching and paving. Not a bad problem, not a bad solution, I should say, but it's never gonna get us to where we want to be. So it's something that has informed my recommendation that we're gonna try and have two or three repair methods in mind with the annual contract. As we talk about the approach to this, the pavement condition surveys will be a big part of it, having regular assessments of the condition will help inform it, and then maintaining that comprehensive database that I talked about. We've gone from keeping records of the Georgia DOT letters on their three streets they would do annually to maybe a little bit better with my spreadsheet, but we want to go one step beyond that and add a database, and this is where the GIS comes in handy, because we can make it geo-referenced and we can include regular updates to the pavement condition index for each street, street segment, and also the maintenance records on that particular segment. And then developing analysis strategy, decision criteria, and then rolling it out. As we have talked about a lot of this, and I threw it at you, I did want to tell you that we got 2016, and we've got a 2022 pavement condition assessment. And the, the graph in blue behind this is a graph of all of the road segments in Sugar Hill, so there's 750 something different segments, not, not streets, but segments. And what you'll see is that the average of those PCI ratings for those roads is 81.67 with a median of 84. So I wanted to have that up here, and I'll, I'll bring it with me when we present the policy recommendation. But the, the, the goal might be to establish what is the, what is the average PCI that we want to maintain for Sugar Hill? And some of the objectives, as I see it, we want to do annual assessments, we want to diversify the repair methods, stratify PCI scores for actionable numbers, and then lastly, I hope Taylor will appreciate this, is at some level, we've got to leave some room for engineering judgment, because whether a, be a crack in a road or a transverse crack, we may have some recommendations on the solution that may not be what is in the document or what is listed, or technology advances, and we want to add something to it. So the repair methods might consist of full-depth reclamation, that's what we did on Brogdon, if you'll recall, the road was in poor shape, and you can stabilize a subgrade, this method, you can do deep patching, full-width milling with some mats, micro-surfacing methods such as fog seal like this is showing here, a cracked sealing and filling, I think we all know what that is, and then seals and seal coatings, as we've talked about, like the HA5 product is a mineral bond application. So that is my very quick, early draft of a presentation which will end up making its way back to you, policy recommendation.
Thank you, Troy. I think the data-driven approach is a great approach.
I was one slide short, my apologies, but I'm just gonna throw these at you just so you can remember yourself. Whether it's PCI index-related, repaving, from a budget standpoint, including signs and striping, as Mr. Perkel mentioned, we want to include that as part of our contracts annual, and perhaps it's the annual budget should equal X times the LMeg allocated by the state. So those are some high-level goals that could make its way into the final policy document.
Very good. Any questions or comments?
I have a few thoughts on that. So with the training class we went to this week, they had an engineer present, and I, I don't remember if he was municipal association, or if he was just speaking on their behalf as, as part of the city, I can get his name. But the question I posed was, if you, if you have a new residential street in good condition, how long should that last? And he, he had a couple of points on it. First of all, he said about 20 years, but the second thing he said is, when going to one of your points, is you shouldn't wait 20 years, after 10 years, you should be doing some sort of sealing and that sort of thing, so you don't get there. So I do agree with that sort of approach. I do agree repaving a whole street isn't always the answer, but where you're talking about not doing the worst first, we've got some really bad things that need addressed first. Now, I'm not saying that necessarily is the whole street, it may be cut and patch, it may be do parts of it, but I do think we absolutely have to look at some of the worst first. The, the charts that you showed a couple of weeks ago, you mentioned you were gonna send us that map, I haven't seen it yet, but you had some on there that were yellow that showed 60%, and some of those I know were really bad streets. You also had some on there that were red, listed as 20%. I don't know exactly which streets those were, but if the yellow I saw was 60, we should never have anything like 20 in the city. So I think we definitely have some catch-up work to do. I think what you've proposed is absolutely right as a long-term goal, but I almost think we have to have a two-tiered approach, a long-term and a, a short-term to get up to the level where we should be and then to maintain.
Yeah, I would say this graph represents a target for each category, so everything on the left of the graph, definitely wanna, wanna fix those, so you've gotta have a strategy that addresses the deep patching and the paving on the left. The ones that are towards the middle of the graph, you can, you can develop some seal coating and other solutions that are preservation techniques that get you a little bit further down the road before you have to do a very robust repair.
And one last thing there, you mentioned this in terms of segments. If you could, you know, when you get into the report or present, at least define some characteristics of how you're breaking down the segments. Is it from one road to another, is it cul-de-sac, or is it a length of mileage or what, just so we get a better idea of, of what you're referring to there in terms of segments versus road mileage and those sort of things? Thank you.
Got it. So you think you'll bring that forward in April, I guess? Okay. Sounds good. Any other questions or comments?
I have a quick comment. Thank you, Troy, I appreciate. This report gets me excited, I like the details, I really appreciate that. I do have a question about the technology piece of it. Is it mounted to a car, is it a camera? What, what exactly is the, the technology that we, I think we've already purchased, correct me if I'm wrong?
Yeah, it's, it's access to AI software that is recognizing the crack and the dimension of the crack, if there is any kind of differential settlement in it. It recognizes road cuts, it recognizes things like faded pavement markings, it identifies a lot of things and provides a, a score and a recommendation based on what it's seen. It was developed in Germany originally and is used in Europe, and I can provide more details to you at the April meeting.
Yeah, that's perfect.
One of the things that I liked about it was the demo product that, that I can share with you at the meeting.
Okay. Thanks, Troy.
We're gonna mount it to your car, Mayor. About mounting it to your car, actually, since you asked the question. All right. Anybody else? Good. Troy, you got another? That's it?
I was thinking this.
All right. Paul, I guess we'll, we'll leave the rest to you?
I'm, I'm finished.
Okay. Sounds good. So I do know that we have a need for executive session to talk about two real estate matters and a personnel matter. Is that correct? Does anybody need any further clarification on that? Gary? Good? All right. I don't think it'll take very long, but is there a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to go to executive session to leave the real estate and personnel matters.
I wasn't gonna be disappointed, so I have a motion to go into executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from Josh. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All right. We'll go into executive session, come back out. I don't think we'll have an action item to come back out with. All right. We are back from executive session, and we discussed five real estate matters and two personnel matters, but we have no action to take outside of executive session, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor of adjourning, raise your right hand. All right, we are adjourned, and we'll be back next Monday.